I think, I think he was more able to like, or something could occur, as he was saying.
He's great.
From the next field case, that blue shade. This, this cloud, this screen just has.
That's what he said.
And, and the transmitting.
He won't win the cause of three hundred dollars.
We'll have a pledge and a pledge of allegiance and a prayer by, led by Larry Zemmerman.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's great. Lord, we're just ever so thankful that as a group of citizens, we get the opportunity and the privilege to represent those in our community. We just pray that throughout this meeting that we represent them well and that all these decisions would be to their benefit and to the benefit of the community. Be with those who are, those that are protecting our community and be with those that have not had the virus yet and are willing to take the shot. We just pray that they have the courage to do so before we ask these things in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Can I have the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Motion by.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Item D, citizen comments.
Somebody from the public wants to say a few words?
Yeah, I do. Amy Butler, 127 North Cedar. And last month, I had spoken to Micah about some debris that's left over from my neighbor's cleanup progress that has been dumped over onto my side of the property line, property line of the ditch. And I know you were gonna have some city workers go look at it, but it's still there. So I just wanted to know if I could get an update on that.
We'll remember it. We've got to get it back down there. It's heavy, but we're.
Yeah, it's super heavy.
Yeah, it's very heavy.
Okay, and there's the big heavy thing, and then there's like, some roots maybe from a shrub or something that there's got a lot of like, dirt debris, but you know what I'm talking about?
We'll get them out there around.
Which house is this?
Okay, awesome.
Yeah. We'll talk about it later this evening.
The next agenda.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right. Is that all? Okay.
I will.
Okay.
Jim Butler, 127 North Cedar as well. Just, I see here that we have the, probably the 101 North Cedar discussion on the agenda. So I don't know if I should wait for those comments during that time period, or if we would like to discuss now.
I think a lot of questions will probably be answered at that time.
Well, then, I will.
Will he be allowed to speak at that time?
Right.
Or not because he's not.
Yeah, whoever might be. Or at least for two weeks anyway.
Yeah. It's an update for tonight for moving forward in the future.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, as we're cleaning up in the area, that we are gonna move forward with that 101 North Cedar. You know, our property, it's bringing the property value around. I mean, we spent, what, $2 million on the park over there. Looks beautiful. It's busy over there tonight. You know, cars everywhere, right? And you walk over there and it's like, man, what are we gonna, what are we doing with this here? So as I, you know, prepare to sell, I just want to make sure that we're gonna at least move forward. So whoever does buy my property can, I can assure them that their neighbor isn't gonna be an abandoned house for, for long term, right? All right. Thank you, City Council.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, move on to item E.
Item E, water certification recognition.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Nick, would you like to come up?
Yep.
Tonight, I want to recognize one of our Public Works team members. In, in the water and wastewater utility world, people's knowledge is also often tested and displayed through certification tests. These tests are class one through class four, depending on how much knowledge you have. They're very in-depth tests, very comprehensive, and they're not easy to take. Right now, I think the percentage that pass each test is about 20%. So one in five people that take these tests pass it. Tonight, I want to recognize our Public Works team member, Nick Ball. He's a hard worker, and he is a go-getter, and he worked really hard and studied, and he obtained his class two water certification. What that means is Nick now can legally make decisions and work on anything in the city of Goddard's water system. We are class two utility, so he is a certified operator. He's come to us with a long line of municipal service. He spent 12 years total municipal service, the last two years with the city of Goddard. The class two water certification is not his only certification. He's an AF, AFO, which is a aqua, aquatic facility operator. He has a class A CDL. He's a competent person, which is another training we do to make sure a person can go and they can run one of these jobs. He's certified for confined space. And he, as I just said, he got his water class two certification. Nick's wife Savannah is here.
Hi.
And his son Elliot. Elliot looks really excited to be here. Anyway, I just want to, I just want to tell Nick how much I appreciate his hard work and how much of an asset he is to the team and to the city of Goddard.
Well, you're just a jack of all trades, aren't you?
Public Works employee.
That is a public works employee. Nick, and Nick is a good public works employee. He's a, he's a, as I said earlier, he's a hard charger. He's a go-getter. He's always looking for something new. He's always expanding his knowledge and his skill set and a great asset to us in the city.
Well, thank you, Nick.
Thank you. And thank city of Goddard for supporting me in, in those endeavors. Thank you.
Okay. Consent agenda?
Approval of the consent agenda, which is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 19, 2021. Accounts payable, April 21, for $166,542.92, and April 28, 21, for $114,187.55.
Yeah, we gotta see, we had some larger transfers this year than we did last year. Is that something we planned on?
You know which one specifically? I know we're, I know we're transferring more.
One of $50,000, that's $150,000.
Yeah, that was, that was the, we had, we only did, we only spent $50,000 of our street fund, you know, street maintenance program last year. So instead of leaving that fund balance in the street fund, I transferred it to capital improvement so we can use it for other street improvements as we go on. It was, it, I didn't want to leave it there because I, the street fund fund balance was getting above a million dollars, which is more than the budget for that fund. So this way, we can use it because it's, because it's, so, you know, instead of, we had the budget authority to transfer, transfer because we didn't spend the whole $200,000. We spent about 50. So instead of just leaving it there, I transferred it to capital improvement. Now we can use it for, you know, if, you know, because Brian and I have talked several times, at some point, we're gonna need to do some actual, you know, dig down and actually rebuild some stuff. And so this way, we'll have fund balance in capital improvement, which we don't need to budget as part of the annual budget allocation. We can spend that because it's in, we've transferred it to a reserve fund essentially. So it was, it was a one-time. We're not, we're not budgeting that annually. That was just a one-time thing because we only spent about a quarter of our allocation for street improvements last year.
And it's reflected in the budget. Any more questions? None? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Sarah.
Thank you.
Second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Item H1, Rustic Creek Bedding Works.
Honorable Mayor and Council, what you see here is a phase map courtesy of our planning department, à la Micah Skoggin. Sounds better to say, do you prefer Micah or planning department?
I prefer remain anonymous.
Okay, our planning department.
That's why it's not.
With, with phase one being this, the sand colored portion at the top with phase three being the middle portion, and then the green being phase two. And that connects into Main Street with Orshlands down here, and then the parcel that the city owns right there, with this being Autumn Blaze and Hopper Edition. So on February 6th, 2020, we adopted the resolutions for these improvements. Then they were approved on January 19, 2021. The issuance, including the capitalized interest, was 2.19 million. Again, for, it's important to note, for phase one. So 2.1 million for phase one, 42 homes. And the sewer bids were awarded at the February 1st meeting, and that was to McCullough Excavation as the best bid. For our current improvements, paving, grading, storm sewer and water, and as I denote in the staff report, the grading and storm sewer were stormwater improvements through the petition process and the debt issuance. We had four bids received, with Pearson being the best bidder for paving at a bid amount of $463,467.50. Grading Pearson for $279,975. And storm water and water going to McCullough Excavation for $335,400 for the storm sewer and $181,200 for the water improvement. So the total bids for this process is 300, $633.75. I'm sorry, $633,375.50, with total issuance amount for this being 1.74 million. So we're well within our financing authority, and the bid amounts were all under the engineer's estimate. These are currently financed with the Series 202101 temporary notes for Rustic Creek Edition. Are there any questions over the bids that were submitted in the best bids?
Number four, now go back up. Number four should be 181,200, not the same amount as number one.
No. Yeah, it should be 181, too. Sorry about that. So these can be taken separately with, with voice votes. So the first motion would be to award the bid for paving improvement to Pearson in the amount of $463, $463,467.50. Holy cow.
Okay. Now that we're migraines are coming from.
Do we have any?
My eyes.
Any more questions? Do I have a motion?
So a motion to award number one to Pearson.
Yes. Motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Number two.
Motion to award number two to Pearson.
Motion by Michael, second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Number three.
Motion to award number three to.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Number four. Motion by Larry.
To, awarded to the right number, not 463.
Right to 181.
Yeah.
Okay, second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
There you go, Matt.
Item H2, IT server replacement.
So we, for the last six months or so, we've been meeting regularly with our Gilmore Solutions, our IT provider. And we've been working with them. We've developed a structure for, you know, keeping our equipment up to date. We basically have a schedule now for every workstation, laptop, everything for a replacement schedule to where we're not, so we're not, you know, everything's up to date, but we're not replacing, you know, half the city's desktops every year, things like that. And so one of the bigger items that is due to be replaced is the server that's actually serves this building and everything that's non-PD because they have their own server. We purchased a current one back in 2013, which is over the five-year lifecycle that we are recommended to adhere to from our IT support group. This is the backup for our financial software. Our, all of our email and telephone goes over to the server, our utility billing system, and all of our other functions, including, you know, permitting and everything else that we do that's non-police. We, since we replaced it, we have, you know, we're much more reliant on technology, more so every year. And we, part of the whole point of putting this replacement plan together was to make sure that our infrastructure was up to date and to meet our standards, which are, technology demands are growing every year. Their recommendation to replace the server is the Lenovo Think System, SR635, one Urack server. This will, the purchase includes the actual cost of the server, all the licenses that go along with it, as well as installation by Gilmore, all the software configuration, the updates to our current system that we'll need to run on the new server, transfer of data from the old server onto the new one, testing and initial user training. The total costs, I've got it broken down there for, what is it, for the total cost is $18,977.20.
Point at the machine.
You got a point.
Point behind you, Matt.
Okay. This is, like I said, this program into the IT replacement schedule that we've been working, we put together with Gilmore, and we'll use the general fund discretionary capital outlay line item for this replacement. And we recommend authorizing the purchase of the server with Gilmore and the network update for an amount not to exceed $18,977.20. Do you have any questions? I'm not exactly sure how this fell into my lap because I'm not the technical person around here, but.
That's complete with everything swamped over.
Yeah.
Everybody trained on the new system.
Yeah, it includes everything. That's why the professional service line item is so high, because it's not just the setup, it's install, configuring it. So all of our stuff works on it the way it's supposed to, transferring everything from the old one onto the new one, and then doing all their testing to make sure that everything is working the way it's supposed to, and then any user training that we need, so.
How long does the user training last?
I'm gonna guess it'll be a day or two. They can do a lot of that stuff remotely with us because they can.
But if you call them in a month from now if you're having troubles?
They're, yeah, they're, they'll, they'll cover everything until it's, it's running the way it's supposed to for their quote.
Okay.
So we need a motion to approve as to form?
Yeah.
Yes.
There we go. Motion.
Motion by reform.
Motion second.
Second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item H3, utility rate ordinance review and discretion.
Okay, it's, we're, as, as a, as part of the process for updating the water and sewer rates to reflect our new debt structure, I went ahead and did the next year's budget for water and sewer because I needed to do that in order to do that anyway. So I'm gonna present proposed budget for water and sewer, as well as our recommended, recommended debt service fee change to reflect our new debt repayment structure. So currently, for the water utility, the current debt service fee is $12.44 a month. That generates $283,000 approximately per year. And the debt service obligation currently, which includes the water line, which we just refinanced, and the water storage tank, total for those, that annual repayment is $248,000. What I'm proposing, and as you can see, so that's about $33,000 more than, or $35,000 more, excuse me, than we are, than we need, that we're collecting in additional debt service fee. So I'm proposing changing that to $10.88 per month, which, based on 1,900 customers, would generate about $248,064, which is the exact amount basically of our current debt service obligation. For the sewer side, currently, our debt service fee is $27.95 per month. And based on 1,830 customers, we fluctuate between 1,830 and 1,850 customers in sewer side. That's generating $613,782 per month. And prior to the refinance and the payoff of the lagoons, our annual debt service obligation was $536,000 per year. So we're proposing lowering the debt service fee down to $15.48. This takes into account the current, the new debts, annual repayment, and it also, we're taking off the $35,000 a year for the lagoons because that issuance is paid off, paid off last year. So this will generate, based on 1,830 customers, $339,941 annually, which, and that, you know, slightly below what our debt service obligation is. But we have excess, excess fund balance in the sewer fund that we can use to offset that. Because, you know, we're, you know, we're, as you've seen, we're adding homes all the time now. So we, we should have sufficient revenue based on what I'm proposing to meet those debt service obligations. And additionally, the way the current debt is structured, in 2025, we're gonna drop those payments annually, about $20,000, so we can reassess at that time and see if we're able to, again, lower or do whatever to, to address that. So for a total monthly savings, I don't have it on the slide, I'm sorry, but it was in your packet, it's $14.03 per month, or $168.36 annually for every customer. And it's not based on usage because this is coming off the debt service fee, so it's charged per customer per month, not based on usage or anything like that. So everybody will see this, every, every single one of our customers. And we'll prepare the, if this is okay with you, we'll prepare the official ordinance and present that at the next meeting and get all squared away. So you anticipate doing So, do you anticipate doing that change immediately, or do we want to wait till the October billing cycle?
No, we anticipated making it effective in June for the July billing.
Excellent, okay. So, we're going to get down to water fund, and basically, what I'm presenting with a couple of specific changes I'll point out, we're basically doing a, you know, straightforward budget going into this year, it'll be the same as you did last year, except a couple of changes, which I will highlight and point out. Department goals, providing safe water and maintaining the water system for our customers. Our major challenges, maintaining the system as the infrastructure ages, evaluating repairing the water tower, which we've done, actually, a good job of that in the last couple of years. Planning for future water needs, this is something that we're going to need to focus on going forward. Brooke and I, Brooke chewed my ear off about it last week, but it's not really something we can do right now, but, and with the state of the economy the way it is, I don't know if we want to do anything right away, but, you know, seeking additional well sites, water rights, et cetera, is going to be a priority in, I would say, the next couple of years into the next decade or two. So, for water administration, this is just an overall expenditures for the year. You can see that this includes personnel costs, contractual commodities, capital outlay. Administration is pretty much the portion of the water fund that goes to funding city operations as a whole. We fund our general operations through, you know, the water sewer, street, and general funds, and this is that portion of that. The personnel services here, this includes one quarter of all administrative staff and one-third of all regular public work staff, including Public Works Director. Transmission, this is essentially everything from the wells to the, or, excuse me, from the, once it's treated, from the tower to the, to customers. And this includes all the contractual services we use, any materials we buy for their, for water operations. Treatment is the, essentially, the coronation of the water before it goes into the, the tower and the tank. And this is just general operations, does not include capital stuff. And then, debt service here, you can see that because we've refunded that, that supply line, we don't have any, you know, we're only, we've only spent about half of what we budgeted this year for debt service, and there won't be any debt service technically as the way we have our accounting structured going forward because we will be transferring that money out of water into the bond and interest fund. That's why that's increasing going forward, and that will be all of the, currently, we already do that for the water tank portion of the debt because that was financed with general obligation bond, whereas the supply line was financed through the Kansas Department of Health and Environment revolving loan. But now, we're going to be transferring all of it because it's all funded through general bond, or general obligation bonds now, and we pay for those out of the bond and interest fund. So, basically, we're, the 799, that's the, that's the storage tank, and we're adding $168,000, $170,000 to include the debt on the supply line. We're also, I'm also increasing the transfer from water to equipment reserve from $20,000 to $50,000. Ideal, you know, we, we try to fund the capital improvement, or the, not capital improvement, the equipment reserve fund from as many sources as possible, so no one revenue source is making an overwhelming contribution. A couple of years ago, we canceled all transfers from the utility funds to the equipment reserve fund because, you know, this was before we did the rate increase to address the last time we had a debt service fee increase. So, we canceled all the transfers from the utility funds to the equipment reserve fund, and we were paying $200,000 a year out of the general fund. So, we would like to get that split to where water, sewer, street, and general fund are each, we're still transferring in $200,000, but it's coming from four different sources. So, that's why I changed that. And I'm also trying to increase the transfer from water to the water reserve fund because that fund balance, we've been spending that down for all the improvements we've needed to make in the water system, and so, I want to increase that transfer, try to build that fund balance up as much as we can. And we're going to probably have another hit on there later this year with the wealth four that we're adding to.
And seven, of course.
And seven, right. So, that's, that's the water fund. And that's the, basically, the overall expenditures for the fund combined, sort of broken down by cost center. The sewer utility fund, pass through all my stuff here. Okay, this is the, on the revenue, revenue side here, you can see, we're generating a lot of money in tap fees with all the growth we've had. I'm still not comfortable budgeting much more than we have in the past. This is, you know, I've been budgeting about $20,000 a year for most recent few years, I'm going to up that to 25, although I think we're going to do better than that, but it's, tap fees are, you know, we, we do those when we have a new building going to place, a new addition to the system, so I don't want to rely on that as a regular revenue, but I've increased it a little bit for 22. Water sales here, this is, this is revenue we generate from just water usage, and so, I'm, I'm budgeting about a $100,000 increase there. And you see on the debt service fee side, I have lowered that from what we budgeted last year down to the amount we know we'll be generating through the new debt service fee to pay off those, to make the payments on the new GO bond. So, overall, we've got about $55,000, $56,000 reduction in budget for the sewer fund.
Is the estimated 1.58, is that because the debt service fee got moved up there because we're not going to pay it basically?
Well, so, this is, this is 2021 adopted budget, and this is what I'm proposing for next year, so it's gone from $500,000 down to $340,000.
Right, I was looking at the estimate though, the 1.21 estimate. Is that why that's?
So, the, so, the way that our system works is, you know, I budget on two separate line items like this, but our system collects it all in one line item. So, that's why that does that, because I don't really have a way to separate it out because I can't actually, I mean, for estimating purposes, I can, but for hard numbers, I've only got one wide item that that revenue goes into, so. Administration, like I said, this is personnel costs and just our administrative side of the street operations, this is where we're, you know, paying for billing and things like Wastewater treatment, this is basically expended at the wastewater, this is regular expenditures for running the wastewater treatment facility. We're coming in under budget, actually, this year, so I'm just proposing the net same for next year's budget. We don't, $2,000 more in contractuals, but overall, we're going to spend about the same. This does not include, this, this does include about $48,000 in plant, upgrade's not the right word, but it's more like replace equipment that's going out.
Maintenance is what.
Maintenance, replacements and things like that, so. And we, we do, we do about that every year. We have a schedule that we, that we have that shows the specifics, and I can provide that to you when we, if you'd like to, when we do the final budget, but it's, you know, I, I don't even, I can't even remember the names of all the stuff, but it's the various filters and things like that that they use. And that's what's happening here. Oh, yeah, and transmission, so this is the, basically, the, you know, everything up to, until it gets to the plant, this is the regular expenditures we have for running that part of the system. And again, I'm just proposing about $2,000 more, mostly for contractuals going forward into next year's budget from last, as compared to last year. And again, the same thing on the, on the sewer side as with the water side, we're no longer technically doing debt service for the treatment plant, that's going to be a transfer to the bond and interest fund instead of being paid directly out of here. And you can see the lagoons, sorry, we made our final debt payment on those in 2020, so those are completely paid off now. And this top line here, this is the new transfer, and we're transferring the, essentially, $340,000 a year in debt service fees to bond and interest so we can make those payments from the bond and interest fund. Last year, I upped that transfer to equipment reserve to $50,000, so it's going to, that's why I upped it in water, because I want that to match what we're doing out of sewer. Sewer reserve transfer, we did increase that last year from $100,000 to $180,000, and I want to increase that next year if, if, providing that our new rate structure will be what we're estimating it will be and not much less, I want to up that to $200,000 and possibly increase that again to $250,000 in 2023, just because we do have, we do still have a lot of excess fund balance in the sewer fund, it's still got over a $1 million fund balance, which is more than, you know, our, you know, kind of 30-day, or, excuse me, 90-day operational reserve that we like to have there, so we're going to transfer some of that out. And in addition to raising the transfer to sewer reserve, I want to, if it's, I want to get the budget authority in the budget process, and we'll decide next year whether we actually do it, but I would like to increase that transfer to the capital improvement program simply as a way to get that excess, excess fund balance out of sewer and into someplace that we have, but we don't need budget authority to spend it if we decide to spend it on whether it be sewer system improvements or other capital improvements the city has. And that's just an overview of the total operating budget. The reason that we're, the budget's higher this year than it was last year is because of those, that, those transfers that I want to transfer out of that fund next year if we are able to, which I am confident we will be, but I don't want to make that, I want to have the budget authority in place in case we want to give us some flexibility, but we'll actually make those decisions next year. Unless you have any questions about budget or the new rate structure, that's all I have.
No?
Okay.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Good.
Item H4, update and discussion on 101 North Cedar.
Honorable Mayor and City Council. Quick background, on November 11th, 2020, the Code Enforcement Officer, being myself, did a preliminary investigation into the property located at 101 North Cedar Street. It was found to be in violation of City Government Code under Chapter 4 of Title VII for unfit habitation. Certified letter was sent to the property owner allowing 30 days to lap to begin the process of bringing the property up to the standard for livability. Property owner did some mitigation work to the yard, but failed to bring any overall improvements to the property itself. Resolution was signed, 21-04, scheduled a public hearing for March 15, 2021. On that date, Mr. Kimpel, the property owner, revealed he was going to sign over the property to Mr. Jason Griswold. Mr. Griswold would help bring the property up to date with finances provided by Mr. Kimpel. A recent conversation last week with Mr. Griswold has revealed Mr. Kimpel does not intend to pay for the rehabilitation property, and Mr. Griswold has backed out of the deal, finding it unfavorable. A recent review of the property records show that there has been no transfer of ownership as it was required at the last meeting, and it is still under the ownership of Mr. Kimpel. On April 29th, the Code Enforcement Officer and a Central County Code Building Inspector did another review of the property to assess requirements for code compliance from a building perspective. This review led the Central County Building Inspector to say the property was in very poor condition with multiple code violations and clear evidence of illegal construction work. In his estimation, the property would need to be stripped down to its status, perhaps further, and rebuilt. Quick analysis, again, as a follow-up, Mr. Griswold has backed out of the property obligation. According to all records, there's been no transfer of ownership, and its current state county estimates anywhere from $70,000 to $90,000 to bring it up to code to make the structure safe and livable. This does not account for the exterior concerns previously addressed by the governing body. The governing body can return to the next regular meeting, May 17, to make a determination and condemnation of the property, and staff is seeking a consensus with the body on the next steps they wish to take. These are just some, go ahead. I was just going to show you. These are pictures that you saw from last time, and obviously, this state is.
I didn't see it when you drive by.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're, they're good pictures, I took them, so you guys.
Condemn it. Tear it down, tear it down. We're done. I'm done.
Let me finish my presentation.
Sorry.
There's some more pictures.
I got matched.
Mike saying, I took these pictures. Before you made it.
Okay, okay.
This is a current picture of the grass compliance.
Okay.
Financially none, approved as the form. And as recognition City Council, no action received and filed direct staff accordingly. So, just to kind of follow up, since there was no signing of the resolution for condemnation on the last one, we would have to start that legal process over per state law. There would have to be a consideration for a resolution to have a public hearing. State law requires us to have that public hearing 44 days after the resolution, that's 30 days after the second week of publication, so you have to publish the resolution twice one week and then the following week immediately, so that's 14 days, and then 30 days after that's a 44, it's a weird number, but it's a requirement.
What is it on the 17th?
17th would be a resolution that the governing body could consider, if they wish to, proceed to have a public hearing for consideration of condemnation.
If we were all in the consensus of doing a resolution today, could we do it?
There is no resolution presented today, this would be just direct staff.
Okay.
Well, Brian, this, I mean.
Larry?
I'm willing to say I acted on your faith, and he was here the last 10 years. Really, over the past 10 years, it's failed to show any signs of wanting to make that property look like anything, other than a slum.
So, let's move forward.
We have to move forward.
Okay. I think, Sarah, you're agreeing, Brent?
Yeah.
He's willing to forested the shred of grace he had with us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very good. We'll draft a resolution presented, Mason.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to answer, you got this question in the back?
Well, I have a follow-up question, but I can ask somebody later.
Well, what's your?
Well, my follow-up question is, okay, so you guys move forward to condemn, and then what's the steps after that?
Okay.
Shall I answer that question?
Yeah.
So, after condemnation, if, so, basically, we have to have the resolution which says we're going to open a public hearing, the governing body, if they sign that resolution, we have to allow 44 days to lap. After 44 days, there'll be a public hearing where every interested party, including yourself, are welcome to speak on the matter, including Mr. Kimpel, Mr. Griswold, anybody else who is a concerned individual, is welcome to speak on the matter. After which, the governing body, if they decide that all evidence provides that it's unfit for habitation, condemnation is desirable, they will sign a resolution saying that after such amount of time as designated by the governing body, whether it be 48 hours, two weeks, a month, two years, it's completely up to discussion of the governing body. They have such amount of time to mitigate what is considered unfit habitation, so they have to bring it up to code completely, the yard and the property to standards considered livable and met by myself and Cali as considered livable. If they fail to meet that, in the resolution for condemnation, there is no further public hearings required, the city at which point could raise the property, meaning that we would bulldoze it and it would be under the ownership of the city at that point. And then it would default to exempt, meaning that we don't pay property tax on it as per state law, and then we would go from there. Does that answer the question?
Yeah.
And in the meantime, can we do anything with the grass to where it's not a nuisance to?
We can send Mr. Kimpel a grass compliance, obviously, he's moved to the state of Washington, so if we send him a compliance letter, if he fails to abide by the compliance letter in seven days upon receipt of the letter, or 14 days after having not received the letter, then we can issue our code compliance to go ahead and mow it, and then we would mow it and we would charge Mr. Kimpel for that mowing. If he fails to pay that, then we would put a lien on the property, or we would bill him for the difference.
Right now, it's, it's a hazard of rats and mosquitoes and everything else.
Very much so. I can send a letter tomorrow.
I'd be in favor of that.
If it's going to, we can send it, but probably won't do anything, but we'll, we'll.
Okay, I shall do both.
Cost is positive.
Okay. All right.
Anything else?
City administrators report.
City administrators.
Honorable Mayor and Council. Just progress on the star bond side, which you can. Just 34 lots out of 59 sold. Global Leaf, you can see the significant progress of Phase 1 and then the new model homes underway. And showing that Phase 1 has 50 homes, and then obviously proceeding with Phase 2 issuance moving forward, and we'll have that presented, you'll see it a future slide at the May 17 meeting. Elk Ridge, showing the progress there as well as a new foundation currently underway. Rustic Creek, total lots, 106, you saw we had 44 in Phase 1, and this is a view of, of the work currently underway, which includes the sewer that's already installed. The R-Cut project, we're looking for a late summer, autumn bid advertising and award process, and then that shows here, and then also the connection of the Galleria Frontage Road, which we're in the process of working with Trans Systems for some revisions on the scope for them, as well as the KDOT agreement, so that the city's previously allocated 1.5 portion here, we'll ask for the resolution, it's just saying to go ahead and proceed. And what the state's agreed to is any overage from the R-Cut that's left over can be applied to reduce the city's participation costs on that. So if there's savings there, we'll be able to apply it to that connectivity, and that's because there's a, a direct commercial payoff for that with these lots here. And then also to further kind of underscore the priority of this road. As you know, we're waiting to hear back on that Phase 2, but for all the work that we did for Phase 2, we know that, that the initial site is not anticipating any sort of additional property tax generators on the site, or any sales tax generators on the site, making the connectivity of this site to where our existing commercial base is all the more imperative. Because then that means we pay the bonds off quicker, and then the citizens start to receive the benefit of those bonds sooner. 183rd Street, which you can see back here, we've submitted the scope, so now we're, we're waiting to hear back, but we know that, that, that project will be, sorry, that that project will be focused on coordinating all of that traffic at Kellogg and 183rd with that R-Cut. So that way, we'll widen 183rd north and southbound from where the flareouts or the frontage road realignment is through that signal there to allow folks to go straight, have a covered left turn as well as a right turn lane is, so you'll be able to handle all three directions there. And again, that's similar process to what we did with the previous frontage road, where we do all the preliminary design work and utility coordination right away, and then the state pays for the construction. And just talking about the connectivity included in that includes the sidewalks so that we can get the pedestrians from 183rd to the R-Cut as well as, so that you'll be addressing not only the seasons, but all of the subdivisions along 183rd to the north as well that want to utilize that, because how the traffic flow and the design of that intersection is, the state's not comfortable having an at-grade crossing for pedestrians at 183rd, so that's why it's been pushed to the R-Cut. And then construction on the bronze here, you can see the sites starting to really come And then reminder that May 10, a week from today, we'll have a joint planning commission, City Council meeting to talk about our land use zoning code and development characteristics for the city so that we're all on the same page, and we can make sure that as we talk about evolving our policy for growth, that, that we're all understanding the direction that, that we want to go. And then an update on our community center focus group, we've identified Thursdays as our best, we'll have two separate groups, 6 to 8 and 8 to 10. And this will be May 13, May 27, June 10, June 24, July 8, July 22, and August 2, with invited letters going out. Tomorrow, we'll have letters, emails, and phone calls that'll include the summer art program, summer exercise program, the five girl scout troops that currently utilize the facility, the Goddard Women's Club, Tops Group, Senior Exercise Group, Senior Group, AA Group, Goddard Lions Club, Public Library, and then also including the four families that host annual reunions there to invite them as well. And then what we're anticipating is, is having the groups be at 6 to 8, and then the library functions occurring at 8 to 10, running concurrently for all of these. The first meeting, just so that you know, trying to find an actual day for, for this session, we had two conflicts on a Thursday that, so in other words, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, they're essentially full. And then we had two conflicts on Thursdays, so that's why we opted for Thursdays, and that was because the Girl Scout troop that utilizes it that night, they have a function on, on the 13th that it really makes more sense for them to be there than utilize the council chambers, because it's kind of like a social etiquette and a T-type, formal, so they'll need the kitchen area and all that. So the very first meeting will be here at City Hall, all other subsequent meetings will be in the community center itself. Upcoming notable agenda items, 12-7, GEO bond, workshop, the rate ordinance, and then I'll have a more detailed follow-up. We've got a page or so that we reviewed on questions today with myself and the architects that we're going to try and ferret out to gauge the public's interest and desires for, for the future planning and design for the community center, and then there we're obviously having follow-up and updates on the community center and then budget workshops. So that concludes my report. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Larry?
I rarely recognize Harlan. Looks good, though, Harlan.
Getting old, I guess.
And sidewalk out front of the community center, looks like it could be some work or anybody kind of love repairing that out there or?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Sidewalk out front of this city building here, it's got some, looks like there's some ground that's going through the other way.
Stuff coming up the grass and weeds, was this?
Well, it's just dirt.
Concrete needs to be repaired.
Okay, the concrete, thank you, I'm sorry, my hearing is terrible, I apologize, Larry. We can look at that and we can look into removing it or repairing it.
Sarah?
The only thing I have, I want to thank the staff for all the hard work on getting the water bills reduced for our citizens.
What was it, 14?
1403.
1403.
And potentially, we'll revisit in three years, potential more reduction. I, I, I think with the growth we're going to have, it's pretty much-
Payoff.
Yeah.
That's it? Michael?
Yeah, thank you, Seth, for all the hard work you guys are doing with the different levels of code enforcement and water bill and all that. I was wondering, on the planer over here in the park, not to pick on you again, but there's one planer that I guess is really unlevel. Is there something we can do about that?
Well, we can, we can try to straighten it up. One of the things we have planned for next spring is new planners, but we can, in the meantime, fix it up. And for the new planners, I want them to be irrigated and whatnot, so we don't have to worry about something. Yes, we can, we can work on it.
Yeah, one of them's pretty wonky.
Okay.
That's an Eagle Scout project.
Oh, okay.
Boy Scouts. They were fixing it the other day. I don't know.
That's an antipode in all their neighborhoods. I said it to Brian a few weeks ago.
Did they do the traffic study?
Andover neighborhoods?
Is that all you got, Michael?
Yeah, yeah. You want to pull it up on the screen?
We can get, we can get whatever signs you want.
But I don't know that-
This is through a neighborhood. You have to do the study to go 25.
And you're going to have to make sure those are actually enforceable signs, they may not be-
Well, that's the thing, is they don't say speed limit, so they're not-
And the thing is-
They're more aware, they're awareness signs.
Yeah, but it'd be perfect, they'd be better than speed bumps.
Oh, yeah, way better than speed bumps.
Nothing's better than a speed bump.
Hey, speed bumps are really hard on them, riding them.
You got all your head, Brian?
Oh, the colors.
Maple over by Dylan's.
You can discuss the orange.
Okay.
You're the only one.
You guys are doing an awesome job, especially-
Do you want to afford one?
Library here, Tina, she's here tonight.
I'm here almost every night, every night.
What color is your job?
I mean, I really like the gray, but then again, maybe we should just do like pink.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Or black and yellow.
Are we supposed to make a decision on the color for the troop?
That, that I think will be at the next meeting.
Oh, all right. Well, I don't have anything, I can't say much more than the pink thing, so. All right. Well, I see no more comments, so I look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Sarah, second by Michael, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion.